Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Meeting, the time is 9:02. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, silent reflection, or silent prayer. Thank you. At this time Supervisor Rickman, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chairman.
Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll?
Supervisor Guardia.
President.
Supervisor Dollywall.
President.
Supervisor Dean.
All here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
Chair Canepa.
Here. Perfect. At this time, we will go on to recognitions and presentations.
Thank you Chair. Our first recognition this morning is the proclamation of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in San Joaquin County, and I would like to invite Keenan J. Crick, CEO of the Child Abuse Prevention Council, Akeia Pride Polk, our Deputy Director of Children's Services of the San Joaquin County Human Services Agency, Connor Sloan, Division Director, San Joaquin County Office of Education, to the podium, as we read this proclamation which states, "Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment that fosters their healthy development; and whereas child abuse and neglect are serious issues affecting children across our community, causing both immediate and long-term physical, emotional, and psychological harm; and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community; and whereas the citizens of San Joaquin County organize the important, recognize the importance of preventing child abuse and neglect, and are committed to ensuring the well-being of our community's children; and whereas all victims of child abuse, whether physical, sexual, emotional, gross neglect, or exposure to domestic violence, should have access to a safe place to live, appropriate medical care and counseling, or mental health services; and whereas parents, guardians, family members, foster care providers, childcare providers, educators, law enforcement personnel, medical professionals, mental health professionals, social service providers, and the public all play an important role in working collaboratively to prevent child abuse and neglect. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in San Joaquin County, and encourage all citizens to work together to support child abuse prevention activities in their communities and schools during this month and throughout the year, presented this eighth day of April 2025. Chair Canepa?
Thank you. As everybody knows, children are the most vulnerable asset we have in our, in our world, and some people honor them and some people don't honor them. And I think it's important that, you know, if we see something, to say something. And, and it's giving people a voice that don't have a voice, so I'll let you guys speak and, and tell us what you guys are doing in the community, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Chairman Canepa.
And respected board members, thank you for this opportunity and time and attention on a public safety issue that is preventable, child abuse. Yes, child abuse and neglect are preventable. Each year in the United States, close to 1 million children are confirmed victims of child maltreatment. Here in San Joaquin County, four children are abused each day. We're not talking about bad parenting, we're talking about clear, compelling evidence of abuse. In 2024, there was a total of 11,363 child abuse and neglect referrals called to CPS. Of those, 676 were substantiated cases of child abuse, all at the hands of their caregivers. At that rate, by the end of today, two, another two children will have been abused, another 14 children by this time next week, and more than 700 children in our community will be abused by this time next year.
Child abuse leaves lasting scars, increasing the risk of suicide, homelessness, and generational abuse. It disrupts neurodevelopment, leading to emotional, social, and cognitive struggles that can hinder education, relationships, and overall well-being. Beyond personal suffering, child abuse caused San Joaquin County over $260 million annually in healthcare, criminal justice, child welfare, and education. But the greater cost is the loss of human potential. As a community, we must go beyond reporting abuse. We must prevent it. This means strengthening families, supporting parents, and ensuring resources are available before crisis strikes. We must shift from being solely mandated reporters to community supporters, not just identifying abuse, but working proactively to create safe, stable environments for children. Prevention starts with all of us, fostering strong family networks, checking in on struggling parents, and advocating for early intervention services. The Human Services Agency partners with the Child Abuse Prevention Council through programs like Safety Net Services, which provides early intervention for at-risk families before child welfare intervention is needed. Additionally, HSA and CAPC are launching a media campaign to raise awareness and remind our community, if it doesn't feel right, report it. Protecting children isn't just a duty, it's a moral obligation.
Child abuse has a serious and widespread negative effects, but the good news is preventable. Among all the safety issues our community faces, preventing child abuse is within our control. We need to stop it before it even starts, focusing on building safe, stable, and loving environments for children. As we recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, we must take a moment to evaluate our progress. Many agencies in San Joaquin County already using strategies recommended by the CDC to prevent abuse and protect children from harm. Our schools play a critical role in these efforts by educating students, teachers, and staff on how to recognize signs of abuse and providing safe spaces for children to seek help. The CAPC, HSA, and SJCOE have a strong partnership that delivers many essential programs to protect children and strengthen families. However, these efforts require sustained funding and attention. Our approach to child abuse prevention must be system-wide, engaging child welfare, child support, the District Attorney's Office, education, law enforcement, public health, and behavioral health. These entities must work together in full transparency for the safety and well-being of our children. Preventing child abuse needs to be the forefront of policies and service approaches, a high priority budget item and goal we utilize for collective efforts in addressing. As adults and decision-makers, we have an ethical and moral obligation to our children. And when we say "our children," we mean all children in our community, not just those we are biologically connected to. Every child deserves to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment. We can do better, and we must do better. We have the power to change this. Child abuse is preventable. Child welfare must be a priority for all of us, elected officials, educators, service providers, community members, every child should know that they are loved, valued, and respected. Together, we can make San Joaquin County a safe place for all children.
So, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and to remind us, to remind our community that every child deserves a safe, nurturing home. But today, I want you to hear this message from those we work so hard to protect. I'll give a moment for the kids to come up here. So, these children represent thousands in our community who rely on us to keep them safe. Child abuse isn't just a personal tragedy, it's a community issue. But with your support, we can make a difference. Prevention is possible, but only if we act together. Be a champion for children, not just in April, but every day. Let's work to strengthen families, educate our community, and ensure our children grow up, ensure no child grows up in fear. So, thank you. And just, so you all know, down here it says, "Protect kids, prevent child abuse." Hold up your signs.
And Mr. Chairman, make sure they don't go anywhere.
Yeah, you guys gotta hang out. It's just so nice to have young people in here. So someday you, you, you can have our job. No offense, no offense to the audience, because we need old people too to pay taxes. So, thank you for that. But it's amazing. And, and I mean, our board, we hired 42 people at the District Attorney's Office, we support law enforcement, we support behavioral health. So, I know, I'll let these guys talk, because I'll get emotional. Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman. You know, being a parent of two early 20-something daughters here, and this is, I mean, I see the little ones here. God, I miss those days. If I could go back in time, you know, that's, but thank you for the work that you guys do, you know, taking care of and watching out for the kids here in San Joaquin County and, and beyond, because we do get people to travel, you know, hundreds of thousands of people a year travel through San Joaquin County. And we appreciate the work that you do. God bless you guys.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at these kids. I'm waiting for my grandson to come walking in about the same age. I want to congratulate you on something else as well. I think we finally have an issue we all agree on. We're all opposed to child abuse. But you know, it's one thing just to say it, and you think about it and how awful it is, but it just, it, it gives me such warmth to know that you're there every single day. I became acquainted with you about three and a half decades ago, and we so appreciate everything you do.
Vice Chair Dollywall.
Thank you, sir. Child abuse is the, one of the worst crimes that can happen in our society, and thank you so much, ensuring that the victims get the support and, and that they need and deserve. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, it's our ethical and moral obligation to protect our children. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Guardia.
And I'm impressed, if my grandkids were down there, they'd be running around chasing each other. But, I came from the Stock and Fire Department, and one of our big, our best and favorite organization was CAPC, and the work that they do and, and everybody does in our community to protect our most vulnerable. I would guarantee that our youth and our children is a priority of mine, and I could say that's probably the same for the rest of the board. I appreciate everything that you guys do, and, and protect our kids.
Yes, thank you. So I also want to give a shout out to Child Support Division. So, I mean, we never give them a shout out, and I think it's important that we make sure that people that are supposed to be paying what they need to pay to support their children are also held accountable. So, thank you for that. If you guys would like to come down and take a photo, I'd appreciate it. You guys are welcome to stay if you'd like. It's very riveting. Yes, yes, that's for you guys. Thank you. Thank you so much. Look at these hairdos. I'm impressed.
You're up, Madam Clerk.
Thank you Chair. Next, we have the proclamation of April 2025 as National Financial Literacy Month in San Joaquin County, and I would like to invite representatives from the Valley Strong Credit Union to the podium, as we read this proclamation which states, "Whereas financial literacy is essential to the economic well-being of individuals, families, and communities, empowering people to make informed financial decisions that lead to greater stability and prosperity. And whereas National Financial Literacy Month, observed each, each April, is dedicated to increasing awareness of the importance of personal financial education and equipping individuals with the knowledge and skills to manage their finances responsibly. And whereas federal and state agencies, credit unions, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and other entities participate in National Financial Literacy Month by offering educational programs, resources, and initiatives that promote financial literacy across the United States. And whereas a strong foundation in financial literacy helps individuals understand budgeting, savings, credit management, debt reduction, and retirement planning, thereby reducing financial hardships and fostering economic resilience. And whereas a lack of financial education can lead to detrimental consequences, including excessive debt, poor credit, and limited access to economic opportunities, making financial literacy education a crucial tool for long-term financial success. And whereas Valley Strong is contributing to this effort with Financial Literacy Days in April, providing valuable opportunities for individuals to enhance their understanding of personal finance and build skills that promote financial security and independence. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as National Financial Literacy Month in San Joaquin County, and encourages all residents, businesses, and organizations to support financial literacy efforts, take advantage of educational resources, and commit to making informed financial choices for a stronger and more prosperous future, presented this eighth day of April 2025. Chair Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming. Financial literacy is something that I think is always overlooked, because a lot of these kids, you go and they can't count back change. They have to pull out their iPhone to do the, the subtraction for change, which, I mean, that's 1A, right? But I think it's important with the, with all the problems that we have in our economy, and the high interest rates, and buying cars, and buying homes, that people are educated. So, that's why I want to welcome you guys here today, and whatever education we could do for the young folks, so that they can be better. My daughter's trying to buy a car, and I'm trying to tell her probably now is not the best time with all the uncertainty and the tariff things. And so, for, for you guys, there's lots of young folks that need help. So, I will give you guys the mic, and we'll go to the supervisors after.
Perfect. First and foremost, thank you Chairman. Thank you Board of Supervisors for this proclamation. My name is Alfredo. I've overseen the financial literacy programs for Valley Strong Credit Union here in San Joaquin County for the past three years. And it's true, like you said, our kids nowadays don't really understand financial literacy. And it goes back to when I was in high school, and I didn't understand what budgeting was. We do an interactive budgeting workshop called Bite of Reality. We do it once a quarter, and you, you start to understand, or it's good to see students understand at the end what their parents go through. And what we're doing with the Financial Literacy Day, that's going to be on April 19th, 9:30 to 12:30, at Thomas Toy Community Center. It's on a Saturday in Manteca. But what we're going to do is, we're going to invite students from all across the county, ages 15 to 18. All they have to do is RSVP. With that Bite of Reality, we're going to have other resources that we offer. We offer an app where students complete modules, and in those modules, they earn points that they can redeem for gift cards. So it's going to be a full-scale Financial Literacy Day, and we're also going to be offering two scholarships of $2,500 that we're going to be raffling off on that day as well.
Perfect. Anybody else? That's amazing. So it's open to everybody, so it's not just your members. So it's open to the public, and they just have to RSVP. So that's awesome for South County. So Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you for being here, Alfredo. Very nice meeting you for a second earlier today. You know, this is so important, as our Chairman mentioned. I know when I was in school back in the day, I, I'm a lot, I'm a lot younger than the other board members here, but, you know, and this is something that we were taught, you know, in high school, or even in middle school. And, you know, just getting back to the basics, and I think our schools need to start getting back to basics and teaching, you know, the stuff, you know, about budget, debt, investments, retirement, and as our Chairman mentioned, you know, knowing how to do your financials and getting out of debt or not getting into debt, and understanding the consequences of your actions, and just going out there and spending money is essential. It leads to a less stressful life. So, keep up the great work. We appreciate the work that you guys are doing. You know, God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it, it really is a shame you only teach this class to 15- to 18-year-olds, because a lot of people could, could use it. So, thank you very much. And word to the Chairman, very friendly, you know, if your daughter were to buy an American car, she would never.
Well, they were showing the tariffs. No, they showed the tariffs. If you all follow social media, they were showing tariffs on General Motors was even high, too. So I mean...
Turn the channel to a good one.
Well, yes. I don't know what news source I should watch. Anyway, that's a whole nother story. Vice Chair Dollywall.
Thank you, sir. We, we all can learn more about this critical topic, and I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Thank you. God bless you.
Last but not least, Supervisor Guardia.
I think the best advice is tell your daughter to buy a used car, then she'll have to worry about it. I, I often think that we as, as society often get educated after we're in trouble. And I think it's great that you're proactive and you're educating people before they get in trouble, so that they're, you're educating on them on, on good financial solutions and decisions. And believe me, I have four daughters that are adults now that, you know, one got it, the other three didn't. So, a lot of education in our family on finances. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. You guys like to come down for a photo, or want to stay up there, whatever, whatever your hearts desire.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Chair. Our next proclamation is of April 2025, a Second Chances Month in San Joaquin County. And I would like to invite Michael Sorenson, the Executive Director of Friends Outside, to the podium as I read this proclamation which states, "Whereas each year millions of Americans return to their communities after incarceration, seeking the opportunity to rebuild their lives and contribute positively to society. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs recognizes April as Second Chances Month, raising awareness about the barriers individuals face upon reentry and promoting policies and programs that support successful reintegration. And whereas the importance of redemption and the challenges faced by the nearly 80 million Americans with an arrest or conviction record, including difficulty securing employment, housing, education, and financial opportunities. And whereas research shows that stable employment, access to education, housing, and community support are critical factors in reducing recidivism and fostering successful reentry, benefiting individuals, families, and public safety as a whole. And whereas April 2025 marks the first year that San Joaquin County will officially recognize Second Chances Month, reinforcing our commitment to building a community that values rehabilitation, reintegration, and second chances for all. And whereas by raising awareness of the challenges and opportunities of reentry, promoting acceptance and support for those seeking a second chance, and highlighting the role of government and community-based organizations in this effort, we can create pathways to success for those striving to rebuild their lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Second Chances Month in San Joaquin County and encourages all residents, businesses, and organizations to support initiatives that help formerly incarcerated individuals successfully reenter society, fostering a more just and inclusive community. Presented this eighth day of April 2025. Chair Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you guys for all coming down and all the partners are amazing on the bottom of this, which I think is important because it's hard for people to be judged on one bad thing that they do in their life. Sometimes that goes with them forever and ever. And they can't get it if they don't have the resources to get it expunged. And it haunts them for the rest of their life. So thank you for giving those people a voice. And I'll give you the floor.
Chair Canepa, Supervisors, thank you for having us today. This being the first time that we have celebrated National Second Chances Month. I'm joined here by my colleagues, by my sponsors, San Joaquin Pride Center, Health Net, Office of Violence Prevention with the City of Stockton. All of us coming today just to show our appreciation but also to show our commitment. Folks who end up in prison, most will come back to the community and they have two possibilities. They'll either be successful or they'll return. In fact, 70% of those who leave prison are back in prison within three years. Folks aren't necessarily set up to be successful, but with partners like this, we have a chance in San Joaquin County. So thank you.
Perfect.
Good morning. Laura Larson with the Stockton Office of Violence Prevention. My department is in the business of second chances. And when you think about our own lives, we've all made mistakes. But the consequences for our mistakes are not as grand as some of the individuals that we work with on a day-to-day basis. And what is important to know is that what we have done shouldn't define who we are and who we are becoming. Yesterday, the Office of Violence Prevention was in the local prison out here, the health facility, working with prisoners who are trying to make a change from the inside out because they're going to be coming on the outside very soon. With friends outside and other partners who work with individuals who have made a mistake, it is important that we come together to collectively support these individuals because, one, they don't feel important. They feel like a failure and they feel like there's no hope for their future. But the reality is, with the support of the county, the support of the city, and all of the partners that we work with, there is hope for them because they are important and they are worthy. And I just want to thank you all for giving this opportunity today to acknowledge this month. But also remember, throughout the year, over the years, over the decades, there are individuals who are worthy of a second chance and that's what we are here today to highlight that. So thank you.
Thank you. That recidivism rate number is alarming. We'll start on this end. Supervisor Guardia.
I always bring up the fire service because I did that for a long time. Two friends of mine, one works, he's a captain in Hayward, another captain in Oakland, both had felonies when they were 18 years old. Went, got them expunged, you know, went through the process, got theirselves right, and they're very successful. And I teamed up with them before COVID and we went out to CYA and spoke to some of the kids out there and talked to them about there's opportunities out there for kids to make a good decision and do good things and have a bright future. And so I appreciate everything you guys are doing because there's definitely hope for people that want to help themselves.
Vice Chair Dollywall.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everything you guys are doing and your partners to help these folks reenter the society and become once again the productive citizens. And thank you for giving them a second chance. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For anybody out here, you guys ought to get this postcard, month of April, the Second Chances. Hand it to your spouse this month when you screw up. It's a get out of jail free card. And then the information on their lunch is on the back as well. I think the sheriff yesterday, we had a promotional ceremony, said it best, "The goal is that they come out better than they came in." So, thank you for all you do.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you all for being here. You know, we appreciate it and giving folks that are watching this board meeting an opportunity to see exactly what you guys do. As our Supervisor Dean just mentioned, you know, our Sheriff's Department has a partner with the building trades for different trades for the inmates that are in there. So when they get out, they have their job ready. They can get a job. You know, the best crime reduction is giving someone an opportunity to get a job. So thank you for what you're doing. You know, we appreciate it. God bless.
Thank you. We could do a photo? I was missing one.
Give them a second chance.
I like this one hour of sleep.
We're charging for the comedy show, just so you all know. Before you leave, we do Zell and Venmo.
Cash out.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Chair. Next is the proclamation of April 6th through the 12th, 2025, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in San Joaquin County. And I would like to invite District Attorney Ron Freitas and his team to the podium as we read this proclamation which states, "Whereas in 1981, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. And whereas every April, healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses unite nationwide to host local events that support victims, survivors, and their families. And whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support, services, and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. And whereas kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma-informed care that meets survivors where they are. And whereas through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliance that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. And whereas kinship reminds us of the strength that comes from connection and importance of listening to every voice and the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through the 12th, 2025, as Crime Victims Rights Week in San Joaquin County and reaffirms its commitment to all victims during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. And to express sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Let this proclamation reaffirm our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and creating a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone. Presented this eighth day of April 2025. Chair Canepa?
Yes. Unfortunately, in San Joaquin County, we don't have a shortage of victims of crime, unfortunately. And the most important thing is that we always have people with lived experiences helping people that are in the same situation that they were in. I want to commend the DA for always doing an amazing job and bringing in the partners and doing the work that needs to be done, not only here at the board with your partners here, but also in the community and the people that are victims of crime. We're doing another thing for cold cases later on in the agenda, which is telling people, hey, that we not only are going to stop crime now, but we're going to stop crime from in the past and hold people accountable. And I think that's the most important part. Just talked about the 42 positions last year, the sheriff, the commitment to our county for public safety and the safety of our citizens is the utmost importance. So, Mr. DA, you have the floor.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Canepa. Good morning, Vice Chairman Dollywall, Administrator Regala, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm deeply honored to join you today as we proclaim April 7th through the 11th as National Crime Victims Rights Week in San Joaquin County. I want to begin by exceeding my sincere appreciation to Chairman Canepa, Vice Chairman Dollywall, Ms. J. Regala, and this entire board for your consistent support and this meaningful recognition. By standing with us to honor victims, you affirm our shared commitment to ensuring their voices are heard and their rights are upheld, a responsibility we hold sacred at the District Attorney's Office. This year's theme, kinship and connection and healing, reflects the core of what we strive for every day, to create a network of support that surrounds victims with compassion, strength, and understanding. Kinship means walking alongside survivors, building trust, and fostering a sense of community that helps them heal and reclaim their lives. It's a mission that drives us every single day. And I'm proud of the work we do to make that vision a reality for every victim we serve. The amount of victims we have been able to assist in San Joaquin County is a testament to the work we do in the San Joaquin County District Attorney's Office. Much like the Florida Gators in last night's national championship-winning game, both Victim Witness and the Family Justice Center had a 2024 for the record books. Our Victim Witness Unit assisted over 20,000 victims countywide last year, and our Family Justice Center assisted 3,600 victims in need, both the first in 175 years of the District Attorney's Office history. I'd like to take and acknowledge some remarkable individuals who bring this mission to life, to Gabrielle Warrigie, Hope Dunson, Kooka Rosing, and the dedicated team of our Victim Witness Unit. Your commitment to supporting victims with empathy and advocacy is truly inspiring. I'm also grateful to Alexis Wilber and the Family Justice Center, whose partnership provides a lifetime of resources and care to those in need. Together, you show what it means to build kinship, and I'm grateful for all of your efforts. I also like to thank all of our many, many partners, including Sheriff Pat Withrow, Chief of Probation Steve Jackson, two of the best victim advocate partners and crime fighters that any district attorney can ask for. We'd also like to thank our other partners such as Department of Child Support Services, Community Medical Centers, Child Abuse Prevention Council, the San Joaquin County Pride Center, without permission, the Assault Human Trafficking Task Force, the FJC Foundation, and many, many more. We are through them better together. Throughout this week, we have many events planned. We kicked off yesterday with opening ceremonies and an art contest where high school students were able to participate and a winner was chosen to represent National Crime Victims Week. Tomorrow, after today's proclamation, we'll host a meet and greet at our Victim Witness. Ice cream will be provided. I encourage you to attend. And on Thursday, we wrap up with our luncheon for our survivors and our partnering agencies at the District Attorney's Office, a moment to come together and reflect on the impact of all of our shared work. Also, if you're unable to attend, you may show your support by wearing this year's colors, which are blue, mauve, and melon. I didn't pick them, but they actually look very nice together.
What's melon?
It's cantaloupe. So, it wasn't... And some of my more talented team members were able to find that in their closet. Today, however, I'm wearing black. And that's for the funeral of Marysville Police Officer Osmer Rodarte. Our sheriff is there attending there today and he's representing me and our county. Officer Rodarte's death in the line of duty is a solemn reminder, too, that often a victim violent crime, too often, is one of our law enforcement officers. So as your district attorney, I pledge to continue advocating fiercely for the rights of victims, ensuring they find justice and healing through our efforts. Through the support of this board, we can keep building a San Joaquin County where every survivor feels seen, supported, and empowered. Thank you again for this proclamation and for your partnership in this vital cause. Together, we are a force for change. We'd like a few words from one of our partners, Stephanie from Prevail. Would like to add a few comments.
Thank you guys so much for this opportunity. On behalf of Prevail, one of San Joaquin County's primary providers for victim services, I'm really honored to be here and talk about all the different services that we provide in our county. We focus specifically on victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking. Last year, we served over 6,000 people. And the need is just so great. And I'm so grateful for the partnership that we have with the District Attorney's Office, with the FJC, with Victim Witness, because it really does take us all as a solid community to step up and support victims and ultimately work to ensure that they don't continue to suffer from the violence that they've endured. So, thank you again so much for this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Guardia.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. The statistics are alarming. And, you know, today, you know, we've talked about child abuse and we're talking about victims' rights. And I'm just very honored and glad to be in a county that I believe that we have a great team that's in place to be there for the families and the victims, to have them, to give them closure and be there for, through their healing process. So thank you for all you do.
Vice Chair Dollywall.
District Attorney Freitas and your team, thank you so much for the help and support you guys provide into this vulnerable population. Thank you so much. And that's why I'm so proud of our family center that you have. One of these days, I would like to visit and see the work that's being done.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I don't have a joke for this one. You know, we've come through, you know, the last few years of no rules, no consequences, so forth. And I know your primary focus is on victims of violent crime. Do you deal at all with, like, crimes against seniors, businesses that are, you know, families are being ripped apart because of, you know, theft over and over again, if you could?
That's a very good point, Supervisor Dean. We focus on child abuse, domestic violence, stalking, elder abuse, human trafficking, and there's one more. Domestic violence, I never remember. But these are very... But these are very high priorities in our community, especially our elders. They've reached a place in their life where they should be enjoying their retirement as opposed to being prey. And they are predators because they do have these resources, often having paid off their home. So not only did we have an elder abuse team that's working investigations, prosecutions, but we had an elder abuse real estate fraud campaign that went out there and focused on the South County, letting individuals know how to make sure that their house wasn't sold from underneath them and making those precautions. So working through education, early intervention, and enforcement, we're working very hard in all these areas. Good question.
Thank you, and your team.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you all for being here, Detective Friedas. Thank you. And, you know, I look forward to this every year, you know, promoting victim rights and advocating on their behalf. And so, thank the district attorney does a great job, and so does our law enforcement, our firefighters, you know, the first responders, you know, the people that show up there first and have to, the first contact with the victims. So, you know, thank you, everybody. And, you know, the reason I like this is coming before the board is a lot of time you hear on the news or up in Sacramento, you hear the excuses of the criminals, but you rarely hear about the victims and the impact of the criminals' action has on the victims. I know this board, you know, we stand strongly in public safety and for our victims, and you see it in our funding and our advocacy. This is a prime example, just the latest one, is this board's opposition to Assembly Bill 1333, which has to deal with defense of habitation or your homes, and you're getting in pretty much making the homeowners, maybe breaks in your house in the middle of the night, and homeowner is a victim of a crime, but this bill would have possibly made that homeowner a criminal, you know? So our advocacy and our updates and, you know, fighting Sacramento on some of these crazy, out-of-touch laws is what we do. And so, thank you all for what you do, and God bless you.
When we're around the state, I know Sheriff Withrow, Chief Jackson, and I, we hear of other board supervisors, and we tell each of our colleagues how fortunate we are to have a board that prioritizes public safety and supports us the way we do. And we are absolutely united on that, and I know we've seen the change because of your support and what you all have done. So I cannot thank you enough for today's proclamation, but also everything you do for all three of our agencies.
Perfect. Thank you. Photo time. Now is the time for public comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors that are not listed on the Agenda and Minutes, Consent Calendar, and Closed Session Items. We request that you fill out a comment form if you address the board in person. There is a time limit of three minutes for these comments. There is a device on the podium with a green, yellow, and red light. The yellow light will come on 30 seconds before the end of the three minutes. With regard to public comment, the law strictly limits the ability of the board members to discuss matters not on the agenda, so this is not an appropriate time to have a discussion with the board regarding your comments. We ask that you refrain from personal attacks during your comments and that you address all comments to the Board of Supervisors, not to the audience. Comments from the public may not reflect the viewpoint of the Board of Supervisors. Our first speaker is Dean Andall, and Les Guzman is on deck.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all this morning, and I come to just say how impressed and happy I am about this board's support of law enforcement in fighting crime in this county. I'm delighted to see that Vice Chair Dollywall and Supervisor Guardia are joining in that effort with the cold case item. I think it's number 21 on your agenda today. And just before I get to the cold case, I just wanted to recount the last two years. This board has put significant new money into the DA's budget and significant money into the Sheriff's Department budget, and you've been investing in success. The DA, just in one year, this is the year before last, but has moved the prosecution rate. So this is when cases are brought by law enforcement to the DA's office. How many of those cases get filed? Two years ago, that number was 50%. Now it's over 70%. And that's not only because you've given the DA money to hire the positions, but also they've been working more efficiently to do more prosecutions. All of those are bad guys that are going to go to jail and not harm other people because you gave the resources to the DA to do that, and they're using your resources effectively. In the Sheriff's Department, you have the same phenomenon. The national rate for solving murders, right now, it's been declining across the country. It's less than 50%, slightly less than 50% right now. Just this last year, the Sheriff's Department in San Joaquin County had an 82% resolution rate, extraordinary. And that's partly because you gave them the money to do it. They hired the good people, but it's also they're very competent, and you've been investing in success. So these are bold moves to improve the crime-fighting machinery of our county. In my view, the number-one issue in our county, crime. It affects everybody, no matter what station in life you are, and we have, as you saw today, plenty of victims that need help. So now to the cold case issue. The grand jury wrote a report on this five years ago, and kind of unusually, they did a follow-up this last summer. And what they found, I'll tell you quick, what they found was that after five years, only the county established a cold case unit, and they had remarkable success on it. And there is over 600 cold cases in this county. Roughly a third of them have DNA that's never been processed before. And so what you're doing today is going to allow the processing of that DNA, and if you have 600 and you get a 10% response rate, that's 60 murders that could be solved, 60 victims' families that will have resolutions to their cases. So thank you for everything you're doing. Thank the DA. Thank the sheriff, and bless your hearts.
Thank you. Les Guzman and Humberto Guzman is on deck, please.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Humberto Guzman. I live in the Mobile Home Park for 25 years, and these last two years, I saw many people come into the place. They not even over there. They not our neighbors. And when they go over there, they don't have place to parking, and they parking behind the neighbor's people, behind the cars. They blocking the ways. And what I need, what I want to see more frequently, the officers over there for more security. And when the people parking behind the cars over there, we looking for them, and when we asking to go, they making trouble. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe it's Supervisor Guardia's, correct, district?
Hi. Good morning, everybody. My name is Zuz Guzman. I have lived at the Rio Mobile Home Park since 2017. I mentioned before about the harassment from my neighbors of 23. So the last restraining order was denied due to a lack of lawyer. On April 4, the harassment started again, so I have to contact the sheriff's office on April 5. I would like to speak with the authorities to find a strategy to stop this harassment. I know the crime can be preventable. I don't want no one of my family members or myself to get killed by my neighbors. And I also suspect that my neighbor of 23 is calling the sheriff's office and making more false statements against me. I'm really, I am a peaceful person. I just want to live in a peaceful environment in my neighborhood, but unfortunately, not everybody thinks the same. The landlord, the managers know the situation. They refuse to assist me in my situation. And there is another issue about the cats, there is overpopulation on cats, and the manager and the landlord accuse me to feed them, but they don't represent the tenants who are having animals and are responsible for them, like, take the animals to get fixed and not let them multiply on the park. And I also comment that there is a lot of suspicious people coming to the mobile home for no reason, and most of them, they come straight to my mobile home and look at my mobile home very deeply. I am in panic. I'm very scared, and I already spoke to a police officer last Saturday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oscar Serrano is up, and Carla Huni is on deck. You get five minutes for translations.
Buenos dias, taken todos ustedes. Good morning to everyone. Mi nombre es Oscar Serrano Martinez y vivo en el 4032 de azul. Es el Río Moro Home. Es el mismo lugar. So my name is Oscar Serrano Martinez, and I live in 4032 South Highway 99 at El Rio Mobile Home Park. Estoy aquí para ver si nos pueden ayudar con la seguridad de ese lugar, ya que hemos visto la presencia de varios vehículos que no pertenecen a esa área. So we've seen various types of vehicles coming in and out of the area, and so we just wanted to talk about this real quick. Estoy muy preocupado porque vienen vehículos que traen vidrios obscuros y se quedan estacionados a un lado de mi moro home por más de 30 minutos y no son visitantes que vengan a ver a alguna persona en específica. So recently, we also have, like, vehicles with dark shaded windows, and they usually station themselves about more than half an hour in the park, but we usually see that they're not really visitors. So usually, the visitors would come in, station themselves in the correct visitor parking, but instead, they station themselves in a way that obstructs the driveway. Me gustaría saber si me podrían ayudar, asistir con algunas ideas para poder bajar esa llegada de vehículos, ya que no se miran que son vehículos que sean, que tengan características de buenas personas. I was hoping maybe you guys could help me, maybe assist me in some way, because it seems like the vehicles don't have, or the people don't really have, like, a sort of good vibes, you could say. So, yeah. He tenido que gastar de mi propio dinero para la seguridad de mi propia casa comprando cámaras de seguridad y luces adicionales, ya que esa área está demasiado oscura. So I've also have to raise expenses to buy kind of more security features, like cameras or just lights, to place them all around the house. So, yeah. Es todo. Muchas gracias. That'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Huni and Molly Watkins is on deck, please.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Carla Huni and a citizen of San Joaquin County. I'm sure you missed me last time, so. Just a reminder, Tracy Ag Ventures tomorrow. It's out at the Antigua School District behind there up in the barn. We're looking forward to seeing the last of the third graders for this cycle, and then it starts again in November. So come on out. It starts at 9:00 and goes to about 12:30. So I just wanted to set the record straight on the letters that were sent out to the President Trump and to the governor that the board approved. Just know that Paul Canepa is the one that signed them, so just wanted that for the record. It was mentioned at the Lodi City Council meeting on 3/19 by the ROV Office that there was a chain of custody on the drop boxes because the ROV Office is the only one that touches them. So you have to understand what chain of custody means. So if I go up to the box and I put in a ballot, or five, or eight, you don't know who I am, and you don't know what the ballots are that I'm putting in. That's the chain of custody link broken right there. Also, the ROV Office said that the post office is the one that has no chain of custody. So when you put it in either a blue mailbox, or take it to the post office, or put it out, there's nothing there. Wasn't that ironic? Because all the vote-by-mail ballots are mailed out. So how can you have it both ways? So when it gets mailed out and Supervisor Guardia gets a ballot or four, you have no idea, the post office doesn't say, hey, is this yours? And you sign for it. You could get anybody, so there's no chain of custody that way either. So I just wanted to make that part of the record here. So then, in the letter you guys, excuse me, that you sent out, it says, "Any ballot received or cast any ballot has to show ID." Okay, that in itself negates vote-by-mail and drop boxes. And I'll bring to your attention again, they are state-mandated programs that are not funded by the state. We have an absentee program that you can request a ballot to be mailed out to you. The vote-by-mail is redundant. I know it's the law, but we need to have it go away because it costs over $1 million to do just the vote-by-mail ballots. Thank you.
Molly Watkins and Jennifer Garcia is on deck, please.
Good morning. So y'all agreed to send a letter to President Trump, and Mr. Canepa signed it, and it is very appropriate timing because the city of Huntington Beach also had an election, and the voters overwhelmingly wanted voter ID on everything that's voted on in the city of Huntington Beach, which is in Orange County. So the state of California was not happy with that, took them to court twice, the city of Huntington Beach, and both times, the judge said, oh, no, you can do voter ID. That's important. You need to know who is voting. So with that in mind, maybe that's something that San Joaquin County needs to do because we need to know who's voting. The other thing is... The other thing is, if you have to show ID and you vote in person, again, it saves us money because you show your ID, you vote, we count the vote and we're done. When you send the mail thing in, it has to go through the machine, it has to go through a bunch of people looking at the signature, and then we get to open it and we fiddle around and that takes three weeks. So it's really simple. Show your ID, vote in person, we're done. Count the votes, midnight, we could all be having a party or we could have a pity party, whatever way the candidate goes. So ID is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Garcia and Garpit Kaur is on deck.
Appreciate it. My nombre Jennifer Garcia Jimenez y vivo en Manteca con mi esposa y mis tres hijos.
Good morning. My name, my name is Jennifer Garcia. I live in Manteca with my wife and three kids.
Mi esposa Angela es proveedora de IHSS. De IHSS ella cuida a nuestra hija Linda.
My wife is an IHSS provider and she takes care of our daughter. Her name is Linda.
Linda no puede mover los brazos ni las piernas debido a una discapacidad con la que nació.
Linda cannot move her arm and she cannot move her legs because of a disability that she was born with at birth.
Como proveedora de IHSS de Linda, mi esposa apoya su salud y seguridad. Alimentarla, bañándola, apoyarle su movilidad. Ella provee cuidado en todos los aspectos de Linda que Linda necesita.
As her IHSS provider, my wife gives, provides her with health and support for every move that she makes so that way she could continue living in the community with us.
Hace poco tuve que dejar de trabajar por mis propias condiciones de salud.
Recently, I had to leave the workforce because of my own health issues.
Ahora estoy esperando recibir un seguro por discapacidad, así que los ingresos de IHSS de mi esposa serán los únicos que reciban nuestro hogar.
Right now, I'm waiting for my benefits, disability benefits. So the only sort of income that we have right now in the family is the income that is coming from my wife through IHSS.
Los trabajadoras y trabajadores de IHSS necesitan salarios más altos para que familias como la nuestra puedan mantener un lugar donde vivir.
IHSS workers need higher salaries so that way they could actually support their families when they run into situations like that my family is running into right now.
Tener comida en la mesa y brindar vidas de calidad a nosotros y nuestros hijos.
To provide food on the table or to offer us a good quality of life.
Gracias, Dios le bendiga.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. I also want to thank the folks that are translating for these. Thank you for coming up and translating. We also offer the service of people need translation services and they contact us before we're more than willing to help you. Thank you. You have the floor.
Good morning, board. My name is Garpit Kaur and I have been working as an IHSS worker in San Joaquin County for two years. Before coming to U.S., I was registered nurse in Ireland for 17 years. In 2019, I moved to U.S. along with my husband so that I could look after my mother-in-law also. I cared for my family so my husband could provide income for the household. But as the years went by and the cost of living rose, it was frustrating for our family to get by one income. I started looking for work and I came across an advertisement to care for an elderly in the community, which is how I learned about IHSS program. The job seemed fitting since I, I had nearly two decades of experience caring for others. And I am grateful to bring those skills to my role as an IHSS provider. As much as I love the opportunity to serve and care for people, the job, a job has many, many challenges. My client couldn't afford the proper equipment, so I got injured on the job while lifting her. To make matters worse, I'm still on the waiting list to receive health care through my job, so I had to heal and recover entirely on my own. We experienced physical challenges on the job while earning a wage that creates financial challenges for us at home. My family and I are at point where if my wages as an IHSS worker doesn't increase, I'll have no other choice but to look for a higher paying job. What will happen to those two individuals in our community who I am currently caring for and I am for, if I am forced to make that choice? I urge you board to raise wages for IHSS workers so we can continue working in this profession and delivering the quality care that people in your community need, deserve, and qualify for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken, would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name.
Chairman Canepa, Board of Supervisors, my name is Melanie Knott and I'm a concerned citizen of San Joaquin County. In the Bible, Micah 6:8, it says, "He has told you, O man, what is good? And what does the Lord require of you but to do justice and to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God?" Let's talk about justice in regards to our elections. Fair, honest, and transparent elections in San Joaquin County is the reason I stand before you today. It's important to keep this topic before us. It simply cannot take a backseat nor be swept under the rug. Technically, we don't have another major election until the year 2026 and we can't afford to wait until then. We must continue to remain actively engaged to restore and secure election integrity in our county and the nation. This is a nonpartisan issue and we, the people of San Joaquin County, wish to come together, stand, and act to restore confidence in our elections. Recent polling shows overwhelming bipartisan support for a voter ID initiative in California. Lastly, there has been mention of the Make Elections Secure Act, which would implement five keys for secure elections. Hand-marked and hand-counted paper ballots, voter ID and citizenship requirements, shortened early voting, limited mail ballots and paper elections, and small precincts. In Psalms 33rd number 12 verse, it reads, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord and the people whom he hath chosen for his own inheritance." Our founding fathers knew it would take a free, sovereign, well-educated, and a heaven appealing individual to protect, to support, to defend, and to keep this great republic. So I look forward to working together with you all to do just that. Let's keep our republic, restore our elections. Thank you for the time to speak today. God bless you all and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. At this time, Supervisor Guardia would like to make a brief comment.
I just want to make a comment about the Mobile Home Park. Just kind of give my colleagues a little update of where we're at. It's been an issue for, for even before I got elected. We've, we've had multiple meetings with the family and have provided different avenues and resources to deal with some of the issues that are dealing with. So just wanted to give you update.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public have any more comments for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes of November.
So moved.
November 12th, 2024. We have a first and I have a second. First and a second. We call for the vote. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, for, we're going to county council for the AB 939 hearing that was scheduled for today.
Yeah, I just wanted to note for the record, there had been a hearing which had been continued to today's date having to do with AB 939. That matter has been pulled at the request of the department. They've been in talks with a stakeholder that objected to the proposed ordinance. We've come to a compromise with that stakeholder and will be returning to the board in May with a revised ordinance reflecting the content of that settlement, that agreement with the stakeholder as well as an agreement for the, for the board to ratify. So I just wanted to clarify for anybody who may have been thinking there was going to be hearing today, why it's not on the agenda.
So if there's anybody here for 939, good job on the continued work on that and I look forward to seeing it when it comes back. Thank you very much. Also, county administrator would like to pull number 10 before we come to the board to see which items they want to pull for consent.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am pulling number 10, which is amend the salary range assignment for the exempt classification of Director of Healthcare Services and appoint Genevieve Valentine as the Director of Healthcare Services effective April 21, 25. So Chair Canepa and members of the board, government code 54953C3 requires an oral report on salary or compensation before the board takes final action. Today's action recommends the Director of Healthcare Services be appointed at step three of the position, which is an approximate annual salary of $309,866.
Thank you. So Ms. Valentine couldn't be here today, so we're going to call for a vote now is, or preferably. So we have a motion to accept it as.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Ding and a second from Supervisor Rickman. Can we call for the vote? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, at this time, so we'll start to left. Supervisor Rickman, do you have anything that you'd like to pull from consent?
Nope. I'm good, Chair. Thank you.
You're good? Supervisor Ding?
You're going to pull 21? You're going to pull 21? Hello? I'm good.
Okay, so. Vice Chair Dollywall?
I'm good.
Supervisor Guardia?
8, 20, and 21.
Eight, 20, and 21. Consent number eight is, where am I? Go ahead. You have the floor.
I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in making this donation. I think any, you know, discussed it many times from, from my seat that, you know, our youth, our children, our vets are top priorities to me and that the collaboration of actually having a mural at the arena where all county people, community, the community from our county and outside our county could see our respect to our vets. So I appreciate the support. Thank you.
So the comment and question is from District 5. Let me see, sorry, let me go to the next speaker. Sunny Dollywall?
Thanks, sir. Just piggybacking on, on my colleague's comment, we have also made a pledge, but there's no money in, in our account. We have to wait till July 1st. So when, once we get some, we will help also. It's a very noble cause and we fully support it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor, do you want to speak to what this is for, what it was about? I didn't read it. I apologize.
Yes, it's, it's a veteran mural project and at the arena, at the Stockton Arena. Yeah, yes, it's not in District 5, but you know, our veterans encompass the whole entire county and many residents of South County, District 5, visit the arena. So, you know, it's, you know, thank you Supervisor Guardia for mentioning this to me and I'm glad I could help. And like you said, man, you know, we are, are, are veterans indebted gratitude that we, we can never repay. And this is just one way for us to show our respect and gratitude for our veterans here in San Joaquin County. So God bless you all and thank you Supervisor Guardia for leading this. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Any other comments?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Guardia for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 20. Retroactive approval of an increase for the agreement with Bolt Staffing Services for incremental, for supplemental staffing from June 2024 to June 30th, 2025 totaling $995,000.
So good morning. Castro. Good morning, Chair Canepa, members of the board, CEO Regala. My name is Rick Castro. I'm the CEO of San Joaquin General Hospital. In 2020, during the pandemic, when, when a lot of people chose for good reason to leave healthcare, we contracted first with Bolt for our, mostly for our lower paid staffs, specifically our EVS staff and our dietary staff. It's used in other places as well. The challenge that we have from a hospital perspective, now first, well, the challenge that we have from a hospital perspective is Common Spirit, Tenet, Sutter, Kaiser, all have now a minimum wage of $25 an hour for all of their employees. I think it's a 23 over a couple of years to 25. Most of them were in that range to begin with. If you look, for example, at a starting wage at one of our competing hospitals, it's at $25 an hour with full benefits at no cost to the employee. In addition to that, a retirement plan. So our starting wage at the time was about $1,650. It's now been moved up to $18 an hour. But in that $18 an hour, there's also the challenge of contributing to the pension. Not that that's a good thing overall, but it's hard to convince a 20-year-old who's trying to, to make their house payment that that, that's reasonable. And we just can't keep the staff. So the turnover in that group of people is significant. But just like with nursing, if you recall, two years ago when I got here, we talked about the fact that we had 320 traveling nurses. We did a full court press and we essentially replaced them all with our own staff. It took some time. It took some effort. We have the same commitment from county HR to do the same on our lower paid staff. It's going to be a heavier push. We're down to, I think, 18 as we speak, but it fluctuates every single day. And so we need to make a better effort in recruiting and hiring the staff and understand when you are so far below the other competition from a hospital perspective, we're going to have some challenges and the turnover shows those challenges. So the commitment is to continue to work with Bolt. Bolt is, you know, the good news is all of their employees are local. They do have a local office and they allow us really to fill these positions and they're pretty good at making sure that that happens. At the same time, we need to do a better job in our own house of, of recruiting and filling those positions, understanding that the turnover is going to be high. So continuing that recruitment on a daily and a weekly basis.
Perfect. Thank you. Supervisor Guardia?
Hoston, do we hire the Bolt employees as full-time?
Sometimes. There, there is a conversion, but it's not a high conversion because they're hourly with Bolt is, if you look at that, those particular employees, their hourly with Bolt is significantly higher and there's no other costs that go associated with it. So it's almost a, it's almost like a cash business for them. So we're asking them to come to us at about a $4 difference.
Yeah, so my, my concerns are that, I mean, I understand COVID put a lot of challenges on everybody and especially in the, in the medical field. But, you know, with this, with this proposed extension of a million dollars, we're, since 2020, you know, we're at $8.5 million. And at some point, I feel like those need to be full-time positions that, and I'm glad to hear that you're working with HR on trying to fill those positions. You know, it's about being competitive. You know, it's about being competitive. You know, if we're struggling to have good employees, and we're struggling to keep our employees from going to other hospitals in the area, we got to look at what resources and the ability to be competitive with these other hospitals. So I appreciate you working with HR and looking at the future of filling these positions.
And I do understand that, but but I want to mention that we are, you know, we're blessed to take care of the whole community, right? We take care of majority of the Medi-Cal community. That challenge is always going to be significant. When you look at bringing, for example, us to a more competitive state, the cost is in the tens of millions of dollars, and we're at a break even as we speak. So those are the challenges, and you're certainly aware of them. I agree with you 100%. We need to do what we can to have completely our own staff. We've been successful doing that with nursing. We struggle a little bit with imaging. We struggle in some other areas like PT, but there are ones and twos, and it's not as big of a deal. So we need to maybe have better strategies on what it's going to take to keep to keep these employees, to make them want to go for these jobs, and to, you know, somehow find a way to deal with the turnover in a better way. I agree with you 100%.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges. I mean, with the vacancy rate we even have at the county, there are certain jobs that we have trouble filling. Obviously, this is one of the tools that you all deal with that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it. And consent law and justice number 21, approve the creation of the countywide cold case task force and an appropriation increase of 500,000 in the 2024 District Attorney Family Justice Center budget. You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I just honestly wanted the opportunity just to hear what, I think this is a good program. I appreciate.
Hold on one second for Ron to get up.
I'll hold my thoughts.
Thank you. You're up. Do you want to ask your questions, or do you want to present?
Honestly, just if, give the opportunity for DA Freitas to just give a kind of a synopsis of what, how this program may be better with this funding.
Very good. Well, thank you Chairman Canepa, Vice Chairman Dollywall, Administrator Regalo, esteemed board supervisors. I think you had a preview of coming tractions from our good friend Dean Andal, and he was talking about the great work that's been taking place in the last two years since my administration's come on board. We saw that this was an area that was highly underserved and was not getting victims the satisfaction that they were needing. So we reorganized the homicide unit. We devoted a chief solely to homicide as opposed to one having shared responsibilities with several other organizations. We added a district attorney to the unit to work specifically on homicide cases, and we also found that all of our homicide prosecutors had too high of caseloads, that with the caseloads they were handling, it was impossible for them to focus, investigate, and move forward, especially since we were now prosecuting the serial killer case. So by reducing their caseloads, giving them more flexibility, more on, more ability to work these cases, adding bodies to this, we've seen great response and turning this around in the district attorney's office. Also, because the district attorney has jurisdiction over the entire county, we worked with our law enforcement partners in forming the cold case task force. My chief, Deputy District Attorney Beth O'Hara, was very instrumental in getting that done, and we worked very closely with the sheriff on this. The sheriff, we're very proud to say, has one of the best established cold case units right now with the amount of resources allocated to us, with investigators, supervision, support staff, and going on. But while the sheriff technically has jurisdiction only in the unincorporated areas, the district attorney had jurisdiction over the entire county. So we ended up taking lead on this, signing all of our law enforcement enforcement partners from all of our chiefs of all of our local agencies to work on this. So that's why we're bringing this to you, asking for this cold case grant. At no time should money be a factor in determining whether a case is solved, especially when we find that local and private resources, local, there's a big difference between local testing and private testing, and that if we can have a private test done, we can get results much quicker and then also respond to it as opposed to reaching this. The very nice thing about this is that working with the CIO's office, they are able to point out that we do have this fund that has a million eight in it, and that these resources are available. So we're really making this money more available to us, and as the district attorney now, we can now share this not only with the sheriff's office, but with all of our local agencies. So cold case in Stockton, a cold case in Mantega, cold case in Ripon would be able to handle this. Also, because this affects our victims directly, the Family Justice Center, working so closely with our victims, was a proper home for this. So we're very excited about this board's commitment to bringing justice to these very tough cases, but let me, I can't say enough that all of our law enforcement partners, I know of no agency that doesn't work day and night on these cases. I'm very proud to be part of that partnership and the great work that we're doing, and this allows us to do even more going forward. So thank you for putting this on your agenda and and passing it.
Supervisor.
And I'm sure Chief O'Hara really wants a question from the board, so she was asking for one.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't really have any questions. Honestly, you know, being new in this position, it's all about being informed. We get the agenda on Friday, you know, we could do our homework on whatever, the 800, 900 pages of information that we get, but more than anything, it's just the ability to educate myself and others that the good work that we're doing, and the the idea that we're collaborating and partnering with our cities that don't, that every government agency or office is always going to struggle with resources and staffing. And so the idea that you you are teaming up with our local jurisdictions and solving some of these cases is a blessing, and I appreciate Mr. Andal's information earlier, but I'm actually happy that we're we're doing this, and we have the opportunity to to vote on funding.
Sure, if I could just add a couple of things. Mr. Andal and DA Freitas made it really clear, so I don't think there's much more to add, except in our partnership agreement with the agencies, we are, and something that we've been tasked with by the grand jury, is to identify cold cases, organize them, digitally track them, and then also get additional funding for DA, um, DNA testing, because there is such a backlog with the Department of Justice. These private labs, like DA Freitas indicated, can get our results quicker, and we can get sort of to the top of the stack. I do want to also add that DOJ has agreed to participate in our cold case task force too, and they understand the the need for prioritization. And like Mr. Andal said earlier, and like we heard earlier in this presentation about victims' rights, another important component is closure for the families. So it might not be a conviction or ultimate prosecution, but identification and closure for the family is vital.
Thank you. Supervisor Ding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DA Freitas, Beth O'Hara, did did our newly promoted under sheriff for the last 24 hours have anything to say?
You know, absolutely. He was just telling us in the room how excited he was to come and talk about this.
Good morning. No, we're super excited about this. Linda and her team, you know, she started the cold case unit from the direction of the sheriff. That was a big thing for him. And she built a master case list, cataloged evidence, really got it up and running, but now we've jumped into this DNA stuff, and there's private labs out there that can do stuff that sometimes DOJ can't do. So there is a need for additional money so that we can get these things, get get this stuff sent off, get it to the proper place. Genealogy work needs to be done sometimes, so we're really excited.
Thank you. And just a final note, thank you, Dean Andal, proving once again, public service doesn't end when you leave office. And if you if you don't listen, he'll call, and he'll call, and he'll call. Thank you.
And Supervisor, I think altogether, one, by creating a list, that one helps identify the work that needs to be done, two, making sure that we're all using best practices, and that's what the cold case unit is meeting regularly to talk about latest and greatest strategies going forward on these cases, not just DNA, but there's other investigative tools such that I'm not going to talk about here, I'd love to talk to you about in private that we can also use forward. But the other thing also is collaboration, that if an agency wasn't able to proceed forward, we would be more than happy, the sheriff's office, district attorney's office, to go forward. So between collaboration, best practices, and just identifying these cases, that puts us well ahead of the game in in getting closure for our victims in justice.
Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Chairman. As for the funding portion of it, or CEO, what does it, well, I know you're the one that found the funding and looked into that, so where does the funding exactly come from? Does it affect the general fund? And do we have funding for 25, 26?
Yes, through the chair. Supervisor, thank you. Yes, that is correct. This is coming from the Proposition 69 DNA Identification Fund, so it is a proper use. We're going to use 500,000 for two, 24, 25, and I believe the request was to be also include 500,000 as part of the 25, 26 District Attorney Victim Witness Budget, or victim, right?
Family Justice.
Family Justice Center Budget, and that will also, I would recommend, and I believe that's what we will be doing, recommending that to also come from the same Prop 69 fund, not touching the general fund.
All right, thank you. And it just, you know, the reason I brought this up is that identifying funds that are there, that doesn't affect the bottom line for, I mean, it saves, you know, the county general fund, and I don't want to get into all of that, but I want to say thank you to Mr. Andal for your relentless advocacy. I know you met with the board and, you know, the allied agencies, so thank you very much. As to the district attorney's office, you guys, I mean, you guys do a great job, we say it all the time, but my question is, you know, we're going to give this funding. I know we spoke about this as a board, and when we went to Sandy and looking for funding and so on, or CEO, excuse me. We are going to work with allied agencies, other departments, so, and we're putting up the funding for this DNA testing and so on. So are they going to provide bodies, I mean, for the task force? I mean, we're going to give funding to a city or whatever it may be. Are they going to give crime technicians or or something to help the task force as a whole? So the county's not the only one that's putting something into this.
Sure, in our agreement, each agency has identified and has been requested to provide an employee or some type of of help to participate in the task force. Each agency is different. Staffing is a huge issue, as I'm sure everyone is aware of, but every every agency that's part of this task force has been willing to participate and to provide not a said amount, not a stated amount or agreed upon, but like I can tell you, the Stockton Police Department has a retired annuitant that works part-time and solely on cold cases. I would like to see that vamped up. I think that once we, the task force is seen as an active, working, productive task force, I think we'll even get more response.
No, that's great, and, you know, I, we mentioned public safety and how important it is to this board, and it's just another example of a board putting our, putting the money where the mouth, our mouth is, kind of thing. But I'm hoping that, you know, the other allied agencies and it's, they're going to provide those resources, sound like MOU, which is, which is great, and this is not just a county effort, by all means, meaning this is a team effort. Victims, no, victims have no boundaries, per se. So thank you guys for your work, we appreciate it from this board.
And if you know any retired, post-certified law enforcement officers, I mean, we're we're always looking for them on our task force.
I'll put the word out.
Appreciate that.
Vice Chair Dollywall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should do everything we can to provide the resources that the sheriff's department and the DA department need. Like Mr. Andal said, even with the 10% success rate, 60 victims will get the the justice we owe it to them, and 60 families will get the closure. Thank you so much. I fully support this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
It's been amazing, and thank you, Dean Andal, for bringing this forward, but Cliff Johnson is the retired annuitant at the city of Stockton, and he just solved the case, and you guys were part of it, for 1984, I believe, is.
Right.
Right, this, in the past six months or something like that? I don't know if you guys took it.
Yes, it was a recent jury trial one of the homicide staff took and brought to conviction, and it was based on one fingerprint in an old, on an old box that was able to be tested, and he was ultimately brought to justice, and the family got closure, which is very important.
From 1984, right? Was that the year?
28 years later.
I don't do math well, but I think that's right.
Right. No, it's absolutely amazing, and I mean, that's the thing, and a lot of people don't understand the importance of doing this, because he's a retired annuitant, and there's only part-time work. So the more that we can do, the other thing is that the DNA testing could be up to $8,000, and a lot of municipalities don't have that. So partnering with them can get some closure, saying that, hey, we are going to hold people accountable for crimes, whether it's been 30 years, or 40 years, or 10 years. I know because there's sometimes too many homicides, and we don't have the right amount of people to investigate.
My chief is amazingly persuasive. Once she got them to sign on the dotted line, then she also knows that she can get more resources as the needs arises and as we have higher-profile cases. So I think not having specific amounts early on is a good thing for us, but we will get the resources, and we will make that happen.
Yeah, it's perfect, because a lot of places and budgeting issues and not being able to afford those, those, and having the possibility of having a case that can be solved is huge. So thank you again, Dean. I served on the school board with Dean many, many moons ago, and thank you for your your wherewithal to get things done. And I mean, the other thing is too, is the grand jury report and addressing that, and I think we've done it at the county, but helping our fellow cities, I think, is is a step up, so.
And I could, if I could just add one more thing about DNA and DOJ, I think that a big problem with cold cases is the degradation of evidence, because it was not kept properly, whether it be blood on clothing, or the DNA, or the saliva, et cetera. Our local DOJ cannot perform, or they haven't been approved to do certain testing, but these private labs have, so there's there's other options and testing that we can go to private labs, although there is a huge cost compared to DOJ, which is no cost, but you wait months.
And DOJ is not expert in creating the familial profiles, also that we're now getting great success in finding hits in the databases, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. But the what profiles?
Familial profiles. So you may not be a felon, but like in the Golden State Killer, they found one of the Golden State Killer's relatives had entered in one of the DNA labs, 23andMe or something to that effect, and by that, they were able to find that the killer was a close relative of that individual, and then the investigation begins.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, I think, the source of about two-thirds of all Dateline episodes, so.
Well, this is exciting, so I'm glad to be part of it and bring it forward. Is there anybody from the public? Supervisors, are we done? You guys good? This time I'll open it up. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Something that we haven't touched upon? No?
Very good.
It's a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion, do we have to remove 10, because we already voted on it, so can I call for a motion to accept the consent items?
Some moved, minus 10.
First from Rickman, second from Supervisor Ding. Call for the vote. Minus 10. Motion passes five to zero.
Mr. Andal, you can stay if you wish. We have a couple of hours left.
Close session, we'll go at 11:30, right, so we can do the in-home supportive services. So at this time, I'm going to close the supervisor meeting, correct? Recess, I apologize. So I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisor meeting. And the board will be acting, the governing board of the in-home support services public authority, convene the in-home supportive services public authority meeting.
And Chair, this is a consent item, so we just need to ask the board for a motion and a second and a vote.
Can I get a motion and a second? Supervisor, Supervisor Guardia and Vice Chair Dolly Wall, call for the vote. Motion passes five, zero. I'm going to close the in-home supportive services meeting and reopen the county board meeting. So at this time, we'll have the scheduled county fees. Public hearing to consider adjustment of the county facility fees scheduled for fiscal year 2526. Senior Deputy County Administrator Kelly Cavelo, you have the floor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Good morning, Chair Canepa, Board members, County Council Kiernan and CAO Regalo. My name is Kelly Cavelo. I am a Senior Deputy County Administrator, and I will be presenting the recommended county facility fee schedule for fiscal year 2526 this morning. There is one recommendation before you this morning, and that is to conduct a public hearing to consider the annual adjustment of the county facilities fee scheduled for fiscal year 2526. After receiving the staff report, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing, receive comments from the public, close the hearing, and then bring the item back to the board for consideration. In June of 2005, the Board of Supervisors enacted a county ordinance establishing the CFF program and adopted a resolution establishing development fees. The CFF program provides a mechanism to recover a portion of the growth-related county capital facilities costs that would otherwise need to be funded with county general purpose revenue or other funding sources. The primary purpose of the program is to finance region-serving capital facilities located throughout the county that are used by the residents and businesses within each of the cities, as well as the unincorporated areas of the county, and to assure that new development pays its proportional share of these improvements. The fee categories are based on the type of development, including residential and non-residential categories. In the unincorporated county, a fee surcharge is collected in addition to the regional fee that contributes to development of county facilities serving the needs of the unincorporated area only. For a project that's located within city boundaries, only the regional CFF amount is collected to support facilities needed for growth in countywide services. If a project is located in the unincorporated area, an unincorporated area's fee surcharge is also collected to provide vital services to the unincorporated area of the county. The CFF program was approved in conjunction with tax-sharing agreements with participating cities to collect program fees on behalf of the county in exchange for providing cities a greater share of property taxes for annexed properties. The CFS, CFF is collected pursuant to the adopted fee schedule by the county and participating cities at the time of building permit issuance. Effective July 1st, 2024, Mountain House was incorporated as the eighth city in San Joaquin County. And it is anticipated, Mountain House will also participate in the collection of CFF program fees, but they are not currently. The CFF program was supported by a NEXUS study when it was adopted that documented the relationship between new development and the need for additional facilities through 2025. On March 20th, 2018, the board approved a NEXUS study update that revised the fee schedule. The updated analysis included an analysis of population and employee projections through 2035. It anticipated capital facility needs to serve the growth and revise the cost and revenue estimates. CFF revenue must be used only to address the impacts of growth and not to address existing space deficiencies or enhancements in service levels. Up on the slide, you have some examples of facilities that could be funded with CFF. And most recently, the CFF funds have been programmed to fund the morgue and medical examiner, examiner facility replacement project for $25.6 million. The district attorney tenant improvement and renovations project for just under $12 million. $5.6 million to fund energy-related capital projects throughout the county and has been paying the growth portion of the debt service for the county administration building at 29.85%, based on the increased square footage of the building. There is currently $17.2 million in debt service remaining on the building through 2032. The General Services Department will be bringing the capital improvement plan to the board for approval, tentatively planned for June, where our future projects and their funding sources, including CFF, where applicable, will be included. Annual inflationary adjustments are required by county ordinance and help to ensure CFF revenues collected are adequate to offset the cost of facility needs pursuant to changes in the California Construction Cost Index published by the State Department of General Services. The Building Cost Index reflects cost trends for construction, trade labor, and materials in the California market. Over the prior period, the index increased 4.19%, which reflects inflationary costs for construction services. The increase is considerably less when compared to the average annual increase of 11.52% over the last two fiscal years, during which time inflationary costs were exasperated by demand for construction services and supply chain recovery related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So on the slide before you, there's a table that shows the regional and unincorporated surcharge components of the fees, the various fee categories, including residential, which apply to both single and multifamily, and non-residential, including retail, office, and industrial. The column on the left reflects the current CFF fees, and the column on the right reflects the adjusted CFF fees based on the 4.19% inflation factor. Per the ordinance, agricultural buildings, as defined by the California Building Code, are exempt from the CFF program. And at this time, I would like to note that staff received a letter of support from the Building Industry Association, acknowledging that while fee increases are not ideal, they recognize the legitimacy of impact fees when done properly. And this slide just shows you what the calculations would be for the various different types of fees based on the new rate at the 4.9% increase. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I just had one. So on the, the increase, the 11.52 was both through the years combined, or was that?
It was the average of the last two fiscal years.
So we're down probably a percent?
So we're down to 4.9%. So we're down, what is that, 7%?
Oh, oh.
Like the inflationary factor has been added.
So it was 11.52 for two years continually?
Yes. I want to say it was like 11.3 and 11. Yes, exactly.
That's awesome. Okay. Perfect. Speakers. Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for bringing this forward. My question here is, for industrial unincorporated, so there's no change? Because this is my concern. You know, we're getting more and more industrial, especially in southern portion of the county. Myself and District 3, I would say, getting the majority of the stuff. Our roadways are just getting destroyed. So, and I mean, I think today with something on the consent about resurfacing or so on. And I was just coming up here to Stockton today from Tracy on 11th Street and seeing the potholes. And we just resurfaced that too long ago. And these are caused by majority, not all of it, you know, but a lot of it are commercial traffic. So.
That's a great, yeah, that's a great.
.09, and it, and we're getting more. Why aren't we raising that rate more to deal with our problems?
So that's a great question. What we do when we calculate these fees is we take the 4.19% and we just apply it to every fee category. If I were to go out a couple more digits with decimal places, there would be a difference. These are rounded. And so that's why it's at the .09%. But we, we don't have different rates depending on what the fee is.
Well, council of governments, San Joaquin Council of Governments, I want to say, last year, we had something similar to this. And I think we ended up bumping up the industrial side of it.
Okay. I'm relatively due, so I don't know if Adam wants to come up and maybe address.
And I, I'm sorry, I, I can't remember when it was. There's so many different things. But there was a debate about this exactly. And, and the concerns is, you know, I'm sure in some other cities' concerns too, about our roadways. So.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Adam Brucker, County Administrator's Office. I see Fritz Buckman next to me here. I was going to say that, you know, this fee is an impact fee for county, you know, region-serving county facilities. It's not for roadways. So the Public Works Department, for example, has its own traffic impact mitigation fee program. They have their own impact fee program. You mentioned the COG. Those are different programs. This adjustment that's being recommended before you today is based on the changes in that California Construction Cost Index that we don't set. And so by ordinance, you know, the recommended increase is just applying that percentage across the board to these fees. So we don't tailor it specifically. Of course, you know, going back to what Kelly said, originally, when they did the NEXUS study to develop the fee program, they did calculate, you know, certain amounts, you know, as the original baseline for each of those different, you know, categories.
Right, but we build these roads. I mean, it's not a facility, per se. It might not even be built in the county, but our roadways serve everyone. So how there not a nexus between this fee and something like that?
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is just that this is for, you know, county facilities that provide services. It's not, it doesn't include roadways.
But public service, or Public Works provides a service, right? So I want to know how this is not a nexus.
Good morning, Chair Canepa and Board members, Fritz Buckman, your Director of Public Works. This is not a funding source that would be used for roadway maintenance. In fact, development impact fees such as this cannot be used for maintenance activities. Only capital improvements associated with the impacts of new development.
So, okay, take the roadways out there. So temple improvement, that wouldn't apply to like star routes or anything like that?
Again, this, this is for, this, this fee is intended to fund, you know, the capitals, county capital facilities associated with the impacts of new development. Not, we have, we have roadway impact fees, TIF and RTIF, which is a COG fee. That are for roadway improvements.
Okay, hold on one second. So the RTIF and so on, I mean, so where do we get our funding? I mean, new development, it has to pay, I mean, it has to pay for itself, right? And, you know, I, so where do we get funding to maintain our roadways if it's, so for example, and this is where I'm, I guess I'm caught up at. We, a million-square-foot warehouse, you're looking at about 2,000 commercial vehicles per day on our roadways. So we build that facility, or we shouldn't, I shouldn't say we build it, we don't build anything on that. But a private entity builds a million-square-foot roadway. There's 2,000 motor trucks on our roadways, on our county roads. Where does that funding come from? Are they paying anything to the county to reimburse our work?
The impact fees such as RTIF and TIF would pay for new roadway facilities associated with those new trips.
Right, but where do we get that funding from the company?
Pardon me?
Say, the company that builds a fact or a warehouse, where does, where does that funding come from? Where, how are they helping out our county, our residents, so we don't have bad roads?
Yeah, they pay the impact fees when they're developing the new property, typically before building permit. And then maintenance is covered through gas taxes, state gas taxes, federal gas taxes, and Measure K.
And we see, the problem is, you see our state, state, it's what we're getting for our roadway, you know, fees for our road, or money for our roadway, that's not much. You know, even like Prop 1, you know, that was passed recently by voters, it's not enough to maintain our roadways. Well, I guess we can talk offline about this, so I can get a better understanding of that. Because one, I know the, one of the major complaints, I imagine we all get it, is the condition of our roadways. And, you know, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So then, how, do we round up, or do you bill it at whatever percentage is on that 9%? So I mean, or, or do you just round up, or so that's obviously somewhere in there what we need to do when there's decimals? Or how does that work, right? Wouldn't you just?
The fee will be the schedule that we're presenting, so it'll still be 9%.
Just flat 9%?
Or 9 cents.
So it's under five tenths, and it goes down, and if it's five tenths or higher, then it goes up?
Yeah, we don't go all the way out. Yeah, we just, we just round it.
Okay. So I'm just asking, would that be in favor of what he's talking about, if we go up the percent, do you go up the whole percent? Instead of, because obviously 4.19% of 9 is still below rounding up, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just go back to the, the answer that we were previously discussing, that this, this impact fee program doesn't address Supervisor Rickman's concerns about roadway impacts.
No, I'm just thinking how to gain more funds in that fee. That's what I was trying to.
Okay.
So, County Administrator, you would like to speak?
Thank you. No, not. I think I was just going to say what Director Buckman had just told me, but he came up and said. And I agree with what Adam just said to answer your question, Chair. I don't believe if we rounded up or anything, that addresses anything that the Supervisor Rickman, he's concerned about the roads. And this fee would not cover the roads.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Am I, yes, sir.
The Bwell Camp, so this would like to be well campus. We're proposing that, we need, so would this help? This is what we're looking at, stuff like this, right, then? Facilities?
Exactly. So Kelly mentioned that General Services will be coming in with their five-year CIP update in June. But also, I know Genevieve has mentioned in a couple of her staff reports that there will be a funding need, you know, for, for some portion of the Bwell facility. And this has certainly been identified as a potential funding source. So we have to do some calculations and, you know, and look at what, what portion of that project is growth-related to be eligible for this, and then certainly, you know, look at the other prioritized projects through the board-approved CIP and see how that, you know, fits in, make sure that there are resources. But certainly, it could be a candidate for use of these funds.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So at this time, I need to open the hearing. So. Capital Public Hearing is open. Any public comments? Seeing none. Hearing is closed. Any further comments or questions? And then I'll call for a motion. Motion by Supervisor Guardia.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Dolly Wall, can I call for the vote? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Still have time, so at this time, we'll go to discussion for approve the the revised 2025, 2026 San Joaquin County Community-Based Organization slash Non-County Organization Guidance Document for Funding Requests. Senior Deputy Administrators Hillary Crowley and Susie Sayers. You have the floor.
Good morning, Chair Canepa, members of the board, County Council Madam Clerk and CAO Regalo. Hillary Crowley, Senior Deputy County Administrator, my colleague, Susie. Oh, I love saying your name. Susie Sayers also with our office. So the Board's granting program to nonprofits formerly known as the Non-County Organization Program recently transitioned to me from crowd favorite Susie Sayer. So today, I will present for your review and approval, updated guidance from that community-based organization that our community-based organizations will receive on the parameters of the program. The county has provided funding to community-based organizations throughout the, throughout the county for, no? Throughout the, for decades. Today, I'll briefly highlight proposed changes to that guidance document and new processes and elements for your approval. Applicants refer to the guidance. Applicants refer to the guidance document when responding to the board's request for application or RFA. For those who respond to funding opportunities, also known as grants, our guidance document is calm and straightforward, and I think it's relatively short, it's two pages, front and back. The change most nonprofits are aware of is the application timeline, which moved from March to July. Another change is the reporting process. Recipients have been required to submit two reports and a final report for a total of three. Given the one-year expenditure term, we modified that to a mid-year report and a final report, so just two. We refined some permissible expenditure language, and the biggest and most exciting change to the program is the implementation of a cloud-based application, evaluation, and reporting system called eCIVIS, that will streamline and standardize the process for not only applying, but evaluating and reporting. So, instead of applicants completing a fillable PDF form and emailing that in, they will now populate their information into a portal. Some documents will still be uploaded, like a 501(c)(3)W9 and things like that, but other information will need to be input into the system, which will standardize applications, again, making evaluation and reporting really easy. And also for the applicant, sometimes they don't know what is a spending plan, but if they have something to fill out, it's, makes it easier for them to. Here's the proposed timeline. Once approved, the guidance document will be available in late June, so organizations interested in responding to the RFA can familiarize themselves with the funding parameters. The portal will open on July 1, and organizations will have until the 31st to apply, so they'll have the whole month of July. We will conduct recorded training webinars on July 8 and 10 to walk potential applicants through the process, the refined language, and the application portal. An evaluation team in the County Administrator's Office will spend the first three weeks of August reviewing applications and eventu, and evaluating internally. In late August, CAO staff will meet with board members individually to present submissions received from their districts and receive input from each board member. From there, qualifying and selected applicants will be notified that their projects will be advanced to the board meeting, and we're targeting September 23 for that. Upon approval of the September, of the docket of, of applications in, on September, I can't say it, I should just read, upon approval of the September 23 meeting, staff will prepare MOUs with recipient organizations who will have from October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2026, to spend their allocations. A mid-year report will be due at the end of March 2026, and their final report will be due September 30, 2026. We will issue a press release to announce the program, which we have in years past. Last year, KCRA picked it up, and we gave a live interview, which we think really helped promote the program. We will also, let's see, we've already started announcing the program through social media, and will continue to do so leading up to the portal opening and application window. We will also notify past applicants through an email. Susie has maintained a list of everybody who's applied, so they also get an email. There are a lot of needs in our community, and a lot of good work being done by our beloved nonprofit community to address it. With that, we are aware, are aware that your offices receive a lot of requests for funding, and there will never be enough to go around. One of my favorite parts of this new cloud-based grants management system is a prospecting feature that our nonprofit partners can use to create their own prospecting lists. They can pull from corporate philanthropic and grants that are available. So, many smaller nonprofits, they can't afford a prospecting tool such as this, but through our new system, we'll be able to offer them a way to find additional funding, and see if they're, and we can also see if they're using the tool. So, it's like, we gave you a resource, did you use it? We can tell if they have. Anyway, once our grant program is launched and evaluated, and evaluations are complete, I'll be back to share more on this really cool tool that'll, you'll be able to offer your constituent nonprofits in your districts, and our nonprofits as a whole. So, if there are no questions, I hope to have your approval of this new grant funding guidance, as this concludes my report.
Supervisor Ding, you're first up, and Supervisor Dolly Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I love watching you get excited about a new computer program. If you can teach me how to use this, I'm still trying to figure out the difference between HDMI 1 and 3 on my TV, so, then anybody can use it. I have great enthusiasm and hope about this program and great fear, because used correctly, it can help our community, used poorly, it contributes more to our problems than it solves. One of the things this board laid out is a mission statement, and how we're gonna proceed, you know, our, one of our priorities is to decrease the amount of homeless on our streets, crime, lower crime, everything else, and I guess what I'm saying is, not that this would be any of our affiliates here in the county, but, but, but the homeless nonprofit, it's become a business. And we've spent $60 million here in this county, and I would argue, some of those programs, we've actually hurt ourselves. When it comes to the NGOs, I want to make sure that, and, and you know, there's, there's a special place in heaven for them, they get a front row ticket to the pearly gates for having a big heart and everything else, but, you know, we've got to have some rules, and, and I know they're trying to help, but handing a homeless person a new set of clothing every day, and then they, the old ones wind up on our street, is not in the best interest of the county. Distributing food in homeless camps, you're setting that person up for death, you know, and another opportunity to take a fentanyl pill. You're setting up an organization of sex trafficking that's going through the homeless camps, et cetera. So, I want to make sure, as we go forward, that these organizations all understand and adhere to the guidelines, the policy, and the mission statement of the county, so, so we are doing good. And, and the dollar amount you're asking for is less than last year, so we're gonna have to be a little more conservative about what we do. Anyway, you, you can eloquently answer my question, as you always do.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding, through the chair. We, we've built, pardon me, we built the application in a way that they have to identify, not only their district, which will help us, but which of the board's strategic priorities their, their project falls under. And we also have metrics, so they have to say, how will you measure success? So, there is a requirement for them to identify, it has to align. The very first bullet in the guidance is, it must align with one of those six priorities that were recently refined. So, also, since there's two reports, that final grant report, if it's deficient, we, most of the applicants are repeat, they, they know this program, and they reply again, whether they've gotten funding or they didn't, they just know, they know about it, words out in our local community. We note, we will note, moving forward as we have in the past, if they haven't met their, the outcomes they said they would, that will impact their evaluation in their, if they apply again. So, when we come meet with the board individually to go over the applications that came from their district, we can have a more refined conversation. But there, we did build in alignment, this is your program board, so it has to align, and the outcomes have to be acceptable.
That's awesome to hear. Yeah, I mean, one of my, my, my biggest concerns too is that we're spreading some of this money so thin, and so I think you've answered that question, is, you know, Chairman Canepo will come in here in about October, November, when St. Mary's Dining Hall is short of funds, or I'll start screaming when Gospel Rescue Mission needs help. Some of our true and proven entities that have helped making sure that we're taking care of those partners, that have proven, that they have adhered to the mission policy statement. So, I'm interested in sit down, go through this program, and, and see if you can teach me how to use it, and thank you for putting the guidelines in there.
Supervisor Dolly Wong, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Hillary, what are we doing to get this information to organizations about the timeline? Because our office had a couple inquiries, and we didn't know nothing about it.
Yes.
You did mention that there's an existing email list, but how about organizations who have never applied before?
So, we will, through the chair, Supervisor or Vice Chair, we will issue a press release. We have also been posting on social media this timeline, I'll do another one this week. So, that has been primarily how. Historically, I mean, the list has gotten big, our county has grown. It's not best practice, like Purchasing could probably attest to, like, notify certain vendors that there's an application, because then if you miss someone, then it's like you have favorites. So, I would like to get our county off of that model of having nonprofits depend on getting an email that it's happening, I mean, we will continue to do it as we transition, but optimally, it's sign up for a listserv, and then some robot sends them the notification, or they notice. But, to specifically answer your question, you know, again, they know this program, they know it's usually in February or January, March, that they would apply. So, we're aware that your offices have been getting contacted, and we did send the, the board, I know you give a lot of emails, back in February, this timeline, which was, you know, this is what we're gonna propose, and pending approval, I think I can even do a post today on social. I hope that's answering your question.
Is this information gonna be on the county's website?
On our county website? We don't, and when we had launched the program, it will, we'll do a press release.
In July?
Well, I'm gonna, in late June, we will send the guidance formally, I mean, it's avail, to savvy nonprofits, they can pull it after this board meeting, it's, it's in the packet. We do a press release when it's like, now's the time, portal opening July 1, here's the, here's the rules, there's how you, to know if you qualify, and what you can apply for, those parameters, that's what this is. But, we can put this timeline, and we have before, so I can, we can start, you know, more frequently, once a week, I can like post on the county's social handles, here's our timeline, get ready in July, if that's helpful.
I think that helps, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Sure, Supervisor Rickman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Question, I have a few questions. Number one, why, why did we move it so far out?
From March to July?
Well, we used to do it during budget time.
Couple of reasons, through the chair, Supervisor Rickman. Last year, when the amount of funding increased, the number of awardees increased by 142%. That volume prompted our office to put in last year's budget, that we were gonna look for ways to improve and refine and streamline the process. It's a, it's a very detailed process in its own right, and then layered on top of budget, is a, it was very challenging. So, one, so the main reason is, it took us some time to find this eCIVIS product, see demos, we've been training on how to build the application, just learning, learning the application, and it's all the things that it can do, and that we want it to do to improve our, our services. So, the main, I mean, there's several reasons why. Looking for a better way to do our jobs, efficiently, effectively, that's the primary.
But the funding's been reduced, it's been reduced this year, correct?
My understanding is the amount is going to be presented during the budget hearings, that an amount has not been confirmed.
And lastly, what are we doing about accountability and outcomes? I mean, I mean, we need to heavily scrutinize these, we've had problems with a few nonprofits. So, how are we making sure that we're holding folks accountable for the money, the tax dollars, money that taxpayers, money that they receive, and is outcome-specific?
Through the chair, great question Supervisor, I know Susie has some examples on the tip of her tongue, but based on the knowledge, like, her historical knowledge, that, I mean, she, we're on a team, so we infused elements of, trying to prevent that the best we can. So, one of the things we're going to do is have a reimbursement-based model, so instead of, oh, great, you get $50,000 for a truck, here's your check, it's like, buy the truck, give us the receipt, we will reimburse you. We understand that certain nonprofits don't, don't have capacity to front 50,000, so there may be exceptions, but again, because we have a track record on the majority of these nonprofits, and if they have met their expectation, like if it's tight, as Supervisor Ding mentioned, the proposed amount is gonna be significantly less, and it's your board's decision whether to go with it anyway. We, they do a mid-year report, if they are not, haven't met the satisfactory metrics of what they said they're going to do by that mid-year report in March, we have the option of not, of either asking for funding back, or not funding the rest of their request. And so, again, in the application, they'll have to specify numeric metrics, of like, how are you going to evaluate how you, there are fewer cats or dogs on the street, or, you know, pick your nonprofit and what they do.
Right, we just, just, you know, we need to, like I said, there has been some nonprofits that didn't do what they were saying, not even remotely close. And, again, we have to just make sure, as stewards of tax dollars, that they're being spent with intent in mind, so if that means pulling funding, or preventing them from applying in the future, or whatever it may be, there has to be some type of accountability toward that. But I know the NGO program, I mean, I love it. I mean, one thing I, I'm glad to see is it being applied to other, or like mom and pops, they're smaller nonprofits that don't have the resources to go to after grants like the bigger ones do, you know, the ones we see all the time. So, you know, with that being said, you know, thank you guys for your, the job that you do do, and if there is any change in the future of the schedule, you know, please notify this board. So, because like you said, we're, I imagine we're all getting hit pretty hard, and, you know, they're asking when this, when this is coming before the board, it was at one time during the budget, now is toward the end of the year, we have to be able to relay that information accurately to our constituents. So, thank you.
Through the chair, Supervisor Rickman, thank you for your patience as we transition this process. The, the part that I'll come back to after we've done evaluations, which will really help, is the capacity, capacity-building portion of this eCIVIS program. If we can embolden and strengthen our nonprofit community, our whole region will be better served.
Supervisor Guardia.
So, this, this application process will have the ability to, excuse me, pull up maybe possibly the data to like, to show like duplication of efforts, to identify, you know, better ways that we could be more efficient? Does that, does that application process have that ability to pull the data, once we, once the applications are turned in?
Through the chair, Supervisor Guardia. Through the chair, do you mean, applications that could duplicate effort that the county is already providing?
Just an example, like, if we have, you know, three nonprofits spaying neutering dogs, and, and they're going, you know, after the same dogs, and this is an example, I'm not focusing on one group, but part of that application process will have the ability to identify, you know, who's actually trying to spay and neuter dogs?
Yes, through the chair, so that is, yes, that's one of the beautiful features that we're building, is that we can see, like, which of the board's priorities they're addressing, and in which districts. And, because, you know, there's similar needs across our big county, but we can definitely see if, like, say, United Way has applied to do capacity building for nonprofits, and then there's also a similar request for capacity building, like fiscal, earlier you honored them, the financial literacy, so like, maybe there's multiple, we absolutely have a way to do that in the new system. I mean, everybody's projects, we don't know what they're gonna be, so I can't say definitively, but categorically, we will be able to.
Great, thank you.
Sandy, I'll go to you next, I just have two questions, and then maybe you could possibly answer them. So, one of them, we missed a couple last year, it was a couple of the chambers that had gotten together. When you do get the email, it's gonna send something back saying, hey, we received this, so that there's no confusion. I know they had gotten together the three chambers from the city, and somehow, in processing, they got overlooked, so how do we address that, that they know we got their portal, would be my first question. And then the second one is, there was some concerns over people selling the things that they had bought with this money, and I want to make sure that there's criteria in the contracts, saying, hey, if you're gonna sell something, you need to pay us our money back, so that, you know what I mean? We're stewards of taxpayers' money, and it came across a couple of our, our desks, that somebody was selling stuff that they had bought, so I, I want to make sure that we clean that up too, so that people aren't buying things and then immediately selling them.
Flipping them, flipping, yes.
That's exactly, whatever, we're gonna call it.
I'll have Susie answer the second part, but for your first one, yes, that's another benefit of automating this system. You will submit it, and there is an electronic record of when you did it, so it will, there's You will submit it and there is an electronic record of when you did it. So it will, there's no way, it's a, it'll help like with human error, which there's elements of that in all of our work. So that is one, um, solution to that. And I will turn it over to Suzie to answer.
Yeah, because there's hundreds of applications. So of course there's, I mean, no, not faulting anybody, but I think this will clean that up.
Yeah, with the new software, you'll have, they'll have an account that will log in, they'll, they'll submit their application that will trigger a notification. So they'll all be captured in one location in the port hole. So there won't be anything missed. It's just, we'll have to do, during the review process, we'll be able to find each and every one that's been submitted. As for your, um, comment regarding selling of things, that we know that we've had some past issues with a few organizations that have purchased um, large things like a vehicle, uh, trucks or food trucks or can, bought a trailer and converted it into something. And then all of a sudden they're liquidating their business. So what we did in the guidance this year is we added significant capital improvements section. If you see that on the guidance, um, we have vehicles, heavy equipment and buildings. So we labeled, um, vehicles like a life of three years, a useful life. So if they purchased, um, a vehicle to use in their program or their project, and then within three years, all of a sudden they try to flip it. Well, they're going to sign that MOU and we're going to build it into that contract link, well, the MOU language. That they have to give the county back the amount of money that they received for that vehicle. So like right now, we have know those organizations that have, are flipping things, that they got money for certain things and now from us. And we can't go and capture that money because it's not in the contract. They're not in breach of the contract. All they did, they did what they said they were going to do with the items they got, but there's nothing else that protects the county to say, hey, we gave you that money. You now give it back. This, this new guidance builds in all that stuff. So even we did give, um, if we also provided funding for elevators in buildings, which we did. Um, this last, this current year of twenty-four, twenty-five, and that was to improve a building that the organization already owned. So the elevator's getting fixed, the building's nice. Now what happens when they go to sell that building in five years? Well, we're out the sixty-five thousand dollars because it's not built in the contract, but this protects the county. So this, this, they go in knowing if they're going to buy a truck, if they're going to fix their elevator, if they're going to buy a tractor to help, um, to, you know, do the farms and stuff like that. And if their organization folds, they have to, if they're going to sell, they gotta give the county the money back. And then we'll make sure we're, we'll be the watchdogs on that stuff. You know, I'm the watchdog right now finishing out this program uh, for this year. And there's a lot of things you have to pay attention to. It's a lot of work for this program. So there's a lot of things out there that you question, you know, there's still questions that we have this year. So, you know, it's just following up. And so this will protect us.
Yeah, I want to commend County Administrator Regalo for taking quick action on that because it was brought to our attention. And obviously you shared it and fixed the problem or fixed the gap, as we call it. So you, you have the floor. You have a question or comment?
Uh, through the Chair, Suzie answered the question. I was going to, uh, talk about the, the asset if it's sold. So just to add a little bit, so vehicles, food trucks, delivery equipment would have three years. If it's sold, they'd have to pay it back. Heavy equipment is five years. So that includes tractors and forklifts. And then as Suzie mentioned with the elevators, any types of significant remodels or building additions, which would include elevators, full HVAC systems and significant plumbing and electrical, that would be up to ten years. So like, uh, Suzie had mentioned, if they sell within five years, then they have to pay it back.
Awesome. Supervisor Rickman, you had a, a request. You're good? That is amazing. Supervisor Guardia.
Just a quick question. So are we, are we going to be places lien holders on those vehicles or property?
Well, this is something we'll probably have to talk to County Council about when we build the MOU because, um, in the past we've done contracts and now we're switching to an MOU. So we'll have to build some sort of legal language into, um, the MOU.
Are you good? At this point, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Questions? Seeing none. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's very thorough. I think it's a positive advancement. Cause I know the time and energy, I know when I was at the seat, the city, I, I didn't ever want to be on this committee who decides the, the ranking. And so I appreciate you guys for doing the thorough work and our County Administrator for being, having the wherewithal to fix that so that there's not any gaps. And people aren't using us to, um, get our money and, and sell things off. So.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Supervisor Rickman? Second from Supervisor Ding. Call for the vote. Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
And through the Chair, I would just like to add, it's a, it's a great team. And so they together have come up with these different of how we can make this a stronger agreement. Uh, they're not left-handed, no.
Alrighty. Before we go to closed session, I will ask Board of Supervisors for comments and committee reports. Cause we're almost at eleven-thirty. That way we don't have to come back.
I, I haven't been able to do it yet because she wasn't, hasn't been here. Maria Valenzuela, sitting here in the third row. Can you see her on the screen? That's her, our new board aide here in District Five. And, you know, she's, she's doing a great job. Awesome. Comes from, um, the Chamber of Commerce in Tracy as a CEO. You know, just talking about how busy we've been and, you know, um, what our offices go through. I know. I think this, on Saturday, what do we have, like nine or 10 events that we all split up and, and hit? And, um, yeah, I don't seem, can we, can we move the screen or what? No?
Come on up.
Yeah, come up, come up Maria. And the camera's still focused on. Okay, now where's the camera? There she is. So thank you Maria for, you know, all you do. We appreciate it and welcome. And she already has the saying down, which is what?
Fifth district, best district. My boss is the best. Now, thank you for the opportunity. I'm enjoying it. It's a passion of mine to serve the community, serve the businesses. So I, this comes naturally to me. And I enjoy, you know, expanding and learning more about other cities that you serve. So thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, hey, thank you for coming on board. And, um, you know, I'll, I'll just touch on a, a couple of things. I'm not going to go over everything. We have been very busy, but I want to say congratulations to Tracy PD and Defense Depot Fire. On Saturday, they had the South County Police and Fire, uh, Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year. You know, the American Legion does it every year. So thank them for recognizing our brave men and women of our public safety, our firefighters and our LA agencies. But attended Tracy Innervate and, um, dinner via the Holomola, um, celebration at the Seek Temple in Tracy off of Grantline Road. Thousands and thousands of people from across the region in the Bay Area. Um, so Harry, who, who, who's, uh, put that on, does a great job. So I'm glad I was able to attend. We had, uh, Taps on 10th, which is a beer stroll in Tracy on Saturday night. And, um, a Brew Fast in Ripon during the afternoon that day too. So you probably know how I was feeling by nine or 10 o'clock. Great, great, great times. And lastly, I'll just mention, I was, I had the, the honor to have the presence of our CAO at our, um, First to Respond Appreciation Day in Ripon, which, you know, Mike Ristus and his wife, um, put it on with the PD and the firefighters. And we walked from City Hall, the fire department, or excuse me, the police department, which is right by City Hall to the fire department, um, about a mile away. Um, it felt like it was long, but our CAO ran it and she did full sprint the whole time. You know, she's, she's awesome. She does a great job. So these are just some of the different, um, events that we've had in South County. So with, I know we have time, so I'll end it there. So thank you Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you everyone. God bless you.
Thank you. Supervisor Ding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I was in DC. This is Tuesday, right? So it was early last week, um, with Supervisor Pat Hume from Sacramento County and Mitch Mashburn from, uh, Solano County, um, with the DCC on water issues. Um, a whirlwind packed two days. We met with Army Corps, um, EPA. You know, the, the Senator's Office, the Congressional reps, the White House. And it was a, an extremely productive couple of days. And it was on the, the tunnel project, the tunnel that's supposed to go around the Delta to take water down south. The tunnel they wanted, that they've proposed building would only deliver fifteen percent more water. Most of the water that goes down to Southern California is through the Delta. What we're arguing in DC met, um, LA Metropolitan Water District has about fifteen billion dollars. The state has another five billion and the supposed cost of this tunnel is twenty billion. Kind of like high-speed rail started at whatever twenty million and now it's up to five hundred billion or whatever it is. We, we went back there with, with a message. We're not, we're not here to say no. We're here to say that we have an alternative plan. And then we tried to put it into administration speak. This tunnel is stupid, uh, costs too much money. It'll take too long. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get them to, to pay attention to, of a, a through Delta conveyance system. So rather than building a tunnel around the Delta, let's work to improve our levees, our infrastructure. And then of course it doesn't do any good to send more water through the Delta and down south unless you have places to deposit that water. And you have reservoirs, uh, to, to do that as well. We, uh, we got a, a fabulous response down there, especially when, uh, some of the delegation from Southern California didn't quite realize that if there's not money there, if they approve this project, uh, they get to go to their constituents and ask for money, uh, taxing their, you know, their bills, whatever they have to do. So that didn't really sit well. Um, so we're trying to, to tie that up. But that was very protective. I'm, I'm, uh, Mr. Dillon asked me to come out to your district on Sunday. One, I had forgotten to ask your permission first. But I also, we had a, a large fundraiser for a very dear friend of mine, Stephen Louie, uh, who's going through, I think his third round of chemo to stem cell cancer, uh, treatments. Um, so a day of bands and the, the outpouring from the community was just something special. So, uh, I just want to send my, my thoughts and prayers to him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Council of Governments, uh, there was an update on Major K and has approved a draft, a strategic plan. DCC Supervisors Meeting, uh, continued discussion about the fight, uh, for this stupid tunnel, like Supervisor Ding said. And thank you, sir. Thank you so much for everything you guys are doing in DC. And thank you for being my mentor on, on these issues. I can, I can learn a lot from you. And Supervisor Rickman, thank you for attending the parade in Tracy. The next one in Stockton is on April twentieth, 10 o'clock in the morning. Everybody's invited. So please, if you can, please attend.
Thank you.
Yeah, District Five might think they're the best with the, the old B, but I'll give District One is definitely have a B and we're the busiest. Uh, we, we get more phone calls from our constituents with challenges in our district. So I, I wanted to, uh, thank my, my team. My team has been doing a great job, which has been allowed me to get out in, into, uh, the field and go after what I'm passionate about. And I'm passionate about the parks. I'm passionate about the youth and give an opportunity for our kids to get out there and, uh, look for constructive things to do other than getting in trouble. So I'm happy to say that, um, I met with the Stock Unified Superintendent. She has, uh, committed to opening up the high schools this summer for the, the swim pools, which is a, a first in a long time. Um, Stock Unified, or excuse me, the city of Stockton is actually doing the training of the lifeguards for free. Uh, those lifeguards are available for any community. So they could be from Lodi, Tracy, if they want the training. They come to, can come to Stockton, get the training and go be lifeguards and whatever. It could be a private pool. But, uh, their training is free and it's, it's available. So, which is a big thing to me because I, I remember growing up on the east side. We had two opportunities to go swimming. That was the Duvern Canal if there was water in it. And we would jump the fence at Franklin High School until PD kicked us out. So there was only two pools in my neighborhood. So the, I'm pretty excited to see that, you know, uh, Franklin Edison and then also to, uh, Western Ranch is going to have their, their pool open. I feel like, um, all areas and Caltrans has actually stepped up. Uh, we're going to be getting some more, uh, cleanups in our area. They're going to be concentrating more on San Joaquin County, uh, because they identified it as being a bigger issue when it comes to, uh, cleanup. So, um, I've been getting my constituents out there. I've been saying that, hey, this is the cleanest I've seen Stockton look in a long time. Their parks are clean. You know, we're starting to see kids get out in the parks. Our off-ramps are, are, are looking good. Um, and our, you know, our probation and, and the teams out there are doing a great job of getting, making our, our city cleaner. So, uh, it's been super busy and I appreciate everybody up here with all the help and looking, looking forward to, to getting some more stuff done.
And Supervisor Gudia, also, I'm sorry Chairman, to you if that's okay. You're willing to work on people's cars for free if you, then you need help or anything, right? I'm just asking for it.
Thank you. I also have a new board aide, Nancy Muniz. Do you want to come up and, since we're recognizing everybody? Nancy joined our team and so she's been working in the community. Sure.
It's not like I've done this before. Thank you Chair. Thank you Supervisors. Um, this is where greatness grows. So thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. I'm learning and I'm growing. So I appreciate it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Um, we went to Lodi and I was remiss because I didn't thank the Clerk's Office. So now I'm going to thank the Clerk, Rochelle and, uh, Chelsea. Thank you so much for doing what you guys do. They, they were there and we had a list and we had lots of folks from the county in Lodi and I read this list and they weren't on it. So thank you for what you're doing. And we're going on the Birthday Roadshow for the one hundred and seventy-fifth. Tracy's next. So we're coming to Tracy. I know we all have to ask permission for Rickman to get into Tracy, but because it's the fifth and the best district. Um, I also attended the event and it was amazing, um, on Sunday. I, I got off on the wrong exit. So I ended up at the wrong Grantline Road. So I kind of, a lot of traffic, a lot of culture. I mean, the diversity in the culture in Tracy and Mountain House in the area was absolutely amazing to see it. And it was just warming to go, um, and see that. Um, I also, another shout out to GSD. They, they put a directory in the elevator here and I don't know if anyone else has seen it, but I was so excited. Um, and then it was even funnier because they thought it was actually Tom Patty that wanted it and it was me. So they were saying they didn't, they thought that they didn't have to do it, but if you go in the elevator, you could see where you're going. And so I want to give a huge shout out to GSD because it's absolutely amazing, um, to see that. We also went, a long time coming, Calaveria Square was a Motel Six on March Lane that they converted to Project Room Key, um, for at-risk foster youth. So we were able to go to that opening. I mean, it's, it was thirty million dollars, but at least it gives somebody who's at risk, uh, a new beginning. We talked about second chances and I think that's what that, um, uh, um, does for people in the community and allows them a nice place to live and possibly work in the area. Um, so that was, we also served at Caesar Chavez Breakfast. Supervisor Guardia, bless you. And so we went to that. There was a Helen Keller mural that was painted. Um, we went to Shumway Oak Grove. Somebody wants to possibly do BMX. So we've been looking to see if there's anywhere we could do BMX. Also, we went and checked out Swenson Miniature Golf because we allotted money. And I know we need to be stewards. So we met with Kemper Golf to make sure that they're doing and they're moving ahead with the miniature golf over, um, at Swenson. And then the CSAC Dinner, uh, I attended that. So the, the, the county coalition that Supervisor Rickman represents. Um, we were at a dinner and thank you for having me to that. So I met and collaborated with folks in the community. Um, and so that was nice. And Supervisor Ding, um, hosted that for them. So, um, Peter Jaffe also thirty years, um, as the conductor for the Stockton Symphony. Um, was able to attend that. It's pretty amazing. They had, um, a hundred people, um, performing that night in a choral. So, um, it was amazing. And then as far as flood control, we had a meeting at Brookside yesterday with Sujavka. And they had folks from the Department of Water Resources and the Army Corps. And I wish there was more public involvement, but I mean, they're out, they're doing outreach because it's going to be lots of trucks in, in Stockton, um, fixing levees. because it's going to be lots of trucks in Stockton fixing levees, so we don't have flooding, so it's a very exciting time for, as exciting as levees can possibly get, but protecting our citizens is one of the goals up here, and I take it very seriously, so, I'm the Chair on Sajafka, so with that, I'm probably sure I missed anything, but we're going to close and go to a closed session, but as Nancy said, greatness grows here, and I'm glad to be a part of it, so, thank you. Are we closing? County Council, are we coming back for something reportable, or?
I'm not anticipating anything to report out.
Okay, at this time, I will close, and when's the next board meeting, before I say the wrong date?
April 22nd.
We will be back on April 22nd, so thank you very much.